This application is for 520 Jersey Avenue Associates LLC. E2018, Lot 07, Site Plan and Variance Application for Construction of Warehouse Building 527, Block 242, Lot 16, Point 11, Village District, Huddersfield.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Professional Staff, Attorney James Clark, and the firm of Clark and Nenio for the applicant. We have before you what we feel is an absolute win in application for both this city and the applicant, and I say so because what we are proposing to do is to eliminate a junkyard. Every municipality hates junkyards. They're necessary, but we try to eliminate them wherever we can. What we have in this place, okay, will be a 67,400 square foot restaurant, which restaurant, a warehouse which will include, that would be a lot of food court, wouldn't it? Okay? It will include a small amount of ancillary office space. As Mr. Bignell pointed out in his report, the applicant's proposal complies with all of the bulk standards in the I-2 industrial zone in which the property is located. We also have a conforming number of apartment spaces. We do have three minor variances, all of which are related to landscaping. We don't have the width required for landscape buffer strip in one small corner, although we do have the required landscaping to fit in there just like we have for the rest of that corridor. We also, as you heard in the last application, we have issues with the number of trees and will make a contribution to the city fund, and also this kind of use, as you noted last time, does apparently lend itself to foundation plantings on all sides of the structure of the warehouse. So we ask for that relief together with preliminary and final site plan approval. We have two witnesses this evening. The first one is our architect, and that will be followed by Scott Turner from Menlo Engineering. There are some environmental issues at this site, and your staff, before they left, asked that we provide an update as to what was going on. With the application, we did file certain environmental reports, but I do have an update in the form of a proposal from Brilliant Environmental, which has been signed by my client, and basically it provides for one of the first steps in the remediation process, which is the delineation of the contamination. And I'd like to offer that up as Exhibit A1. We would agree as a voluntary condition of approval to continue all of the environmental remediation efforts. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the opening remarks. Unless you or any of the board members have any initial questions, we'll go to the first witness.
Please, thank you.
Okay. We'll call our architect.
Please state your name and spell your last name.
First name is Kamlesh, K-A-M-L-E-S-H, and last name is Shaah, S-H-A-H.
Please spell your first name again.
Kamlesh, K-A-M-L-E-S-H.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing above the truth?
I do.
You may proceed.
Licensed professional architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, sir.
And for how long?
Twenty years.
Okay. Have you ever testified before this board?
Not this board, but several other boards in New Jersey.
Okay. And had your credentials always been accepted?
Yes, sir.
All right. I would offer him up as an expert in the field of architecture.
Yes, sir.
Kamlesh, did you prepare the floor plans and elevations that accompany this application?
Yes, it was done under my supervision. I didn't directly prepare one, but it was done under my supervision.
And you reviewed and approved?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can you describe the dimensions of the proposed building as well as its height?
The building is almost a square 67,200 square feet. The height of the building is 39 feet to the parapet. There's a high bay, just architectural features, that are about four feet above 39 feet. Again, it's a one-story, flat-roofed structure. Open warehouse space on the west side, there is a little, small office space, a couple of bathrooms and a utility area, a couple of bathrooms in the back for the truck drivers. There are 14 bays, one drive-in bay with a ramp for the forklifts and/or small trucks to come in. Again, it's an open layout, one-story, flat-roofed building.
Where would the mechanical equipment be located?
The mechanical equipment will be located on the roof, and most likely will be situated right in the middle of the footprint, which will be farther away from the perimeter.
So it will not hardly be viewed?
I'm sorry.
Will not hardly be viewed, Kamlesh?
That's correct. Building being 39 feet high, it probably would not be seen from the back.
All right. Do we have some handouts as well?
Yes, I have about 20 prints of the plan, the elevations, and the three-dimensional rendering.
Ready?
Yes.
You can mark these. You can either individually or collectively use these. Marking point, please, is A2. Fine. All right, starting with the top page, can you take the board through these elevations, please?
The exhibit that you see in front of you is the three-dimensional rendering, colored rendering marked as A2. It's dated August 15, 2018. It's a three-dimensional rendering representing the west side, which is the entrance of the facility. The building, again, is constructed, or will be constructed, out of tilt-up concrete structure, which is an insulated structure, with high bay, clear windows to gain some natural light. Dual dome color on the facade and a high storefront at the entryway. There are a few windows in the front, on the low level, for more light, more light into the building.
Is this the side that faces Jersey Avenue?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Now, they're all collectively marked A2.
Okay. The rear elevation, which represents 14 bays, truck bays, and a drive-through ramp, truck bay, exterior egress doors, high bay windows, again, a flat roof, same construction, it's going to be concrete, all four sides. Again, a little band of dark accent color to break up the monotony of the facade. Same thing on the south side elevation. We break, we broke up a little bit of the flat facade by raising a panel to give the aesthetical aspect of the facade as well. Dual tone, again, the gray and the dark gray. That's one side of the elevation. It's SK3, again, dated June 7 on the sheet. Sheet SK2 represents the front elevation and the north side elevation. Again, similar, in the middle of the building, we've raised a panel to break up the length of the building, same exact repetition of the two colors, high windows, and in the front, we have a storefront and some windows in the front as well to bore some light.
All right. We don't have any facade signage proposed yet, correct?
Not as of yet.
And that's because we don't have a tenant yet, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Finally, with respect to a freestanding sign, if we're fortunate enough to receive an approval, we will add that as a detail to your plans?
That's correct.
All right. That's all the questions I have of this witness, Mr. Chairman. He's available for yours.
No questions, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll call Mr. Scott Turner.
Please state your names, spell your last name.
Scott Turner, T-U-R-N-E-R.
All right. Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing above the truth?
I do.
Please proceed.
Licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
Prepared before this board previously?
I have. It's been a number of years, but I have been here before.
And had your credentials, well, were you accepted back then?
I was accepted back then.
I'm saying, have your credentials changed in any way since then?
No, they have not.
I would offer him up again, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Did you or members of Menlo Engineering prepare the site plan drawings which accompany this application?
Yes, we did.
Okay. All right. Please tell the board the location and the size of the property.
Sure, I'll mark it. Exhibit A3 on the easel. And it was an exhibit prepared by my office entitled 520 Jersey Avenue Site Plan Exhibit, dated January 14, 2019, and it is a rendering of the proposed site plan with the landscaping shown, all of which are overlaying on top of a Google aerial map from 2018. The property itself is Block 242, Lot 16.02. It takes approximately 4.48 acres. It is located on the easterly side of Jersey Avenue, which is a Clapham County road along this frontage. It has approximately 343 feet of frontage, and the property has a ground 559 feet of depth. It's bounded by primarily commercial and industrial warehousing types uses, particularly on the other side of Jersey Avenue and on the northerly boundary line. To the south, it were bounded by Vandite Avenue, which was a vacated right-of-way. It's currently used as a large parking lot for the use immediately adjacent to that parking facility, which is the Social Security Administration Building. And then to the east, which is the rear property, is bounded by the Amtrak rail line. The property itself is currently an existing junkyard facility. The remnants of that junkyard is still on-site. There is some various fencing surrounding the property that's in various states of disrepair, all of which will be removed and replaced if the board acts favorably on the application with what you see here tonight.
Okay. Can you take the board through all of these site improvements that are proposed?
Sure, yeah. And once again, we are here seeking approval for a 67,200 square foot single building, a one-story building. That will be comprised of 65,400 square feet of warehouse space and then 1,800 square feet of ancillary office area. We are proposing to access the site through Jersey Avenue by way of two new driveways. The most northerly driveway will be the primary access, and the only access will lead to service the back of the building, and that will run towards the rear of the property, which will gain access to the rear truck dock loading spaces, will have 14 dock spaces, and then a drive-in ramp space, and then we have a dedicated trash compactor area in the rear as well, immediately adjacent to that building. So trash will be handled through that compactor. Any recycling material that may occur on-site will be handled internally and taken out during normal collection times. The rear of the property, beyond the limits of the truck dock spaces, which will be addressed with reinforced concrete, will be handled with a heavy-duty paving section that's been designed in dimension to allow for WB53 truck movements as well as WB67, which is the larger tractor trailers. At the most southeastally corner of the property, you'll see a semicircular bulb, which is there and designed to accommodate those truck movements and allow them to get back and exit the site by way of that northerly driveway. The southerly driveway off of Jersey Avenue is really the driveway that would be used to access the main car parking lot, which is along the front of the building. In between the front of the building and Jersey Avenue, we have 41 parking spaces proposed, two of which are ADA compliant spaces, and the 41 spaces complies with the city zoning ordinances in terms of the amount of parking required for the intended use. We are proposing an above-ground detention basin at the northeastern rear section of the property. That will be an improvement over what's there today. That's been designed to comply with all the necessary requirements, including water quality. We're going to provide a water quality structure on that detention basin prior to a discharging at the northeast corner of the site, which is where the current discharge is located. The other utilities are available to the site. We have gas, water, electric, telephone, anything will be brought along with underground feeds, primarily located on the northerly side through that most northerly driveway, and available through Jersey Avenue. We have a lighting plan that we've also provided for review. They're all LED, energy-efficient lighting fixtures. They'll be square top fixtures that will be mounted at 27 and 1/2 feet tall. We have a 0.5-foot candle minimum with a 1.3-foot candle average in the parking lots and the service driveways. And again, we've been reviewed and determined to be compliant with your city standards. The landscaping and buffering, we've done a significant amount of landscaping proposed for the project. We have 125 new trees being proposed to be installed, and that's a combination of street trees, evergreen trees, flowering trees, and deciduous trees. We have 184 shrubs and 393 ground cover plantings. And we've taken the landscaping, of course, you know, installed it wherever we could throughout the entire site with an emphasis along Jersey Avenue corridor, between the parking lot and Jersey Ave., and then, of course, around the perimeter of the parking and then around the detention basin as well. We do have some plantings on the two open sides of the new building, the northerly side of the building and the southerly side of the building. The other two sides, of course, are taken up with the necessary loading spaces and park parking and sidewalks. Speaking of sidewalks, we are proposing new sidewalk along the front of the building to facilitate getting into that main office space, and we are also proposing a five-foot wide concrete sidewalk along Jersey Avenue in accordance with the county's standards. There is a proposed electrical transformer pit that's going to be proposed, or currently is proposed, in front of the building in a large landscaped island directly across from the southerly driveway. We provide landscaping and screening as well as bolards to protect that transformer. It'll all be subject to review of utility companies, but we believe that's the best location for that, for that pad.
There is room on the site for a freestanding side, sir?
We do, and we proposed on the site plan as a new freestanding side to be compliant with your city standards. It'll be set back a minimum of 25 feet. It is located on the southerly side of the southerly driveway, in between the road parking there. We've got a detail, a very generic detail, shown on the, on our detail sheets, if you've seen that. We have a rough sign area in between the two decorative brick pillars of about 24 square feet, which is well under, at least, the permitted of 100 square feet for our standards, and we are well under the 15-foot height. That's subject to change, but we certainly aren't looking for any deviation or variances from your sub, your sign requirements.
Anything else before we move to the staff reports?
No, unless I miss something, Jim.
Nope, nope, we're good. All right. Have you had an opportunity to review the Bignell planning report dated January 8?
Yes, I have.
All right. Mr. Chairman, as the customer of the deal would like to move, the panel of the pin, which is the plan review comments, which is always the guts of that report, and between Mr. Turner and I will take you through it. The first, Letter A, asks us to comply with all other necessary governmental approvals, and we will, of course, do that.
Correct.
Item B asks for testimony as to how the warehouse will operate. We do not have any tenants signed up yet, so we cannot give you any particulars about how it will operate. There is strong interest in the space, as Mr. Paulus noted, up and down the Jersey Avenue corridor, but we simply, at this point in time, cannot tell you exactly how it's going to operate. But it is a rather small warehouse in terms of some of the larger ones that we've seen at 67,200 square feet. With regard to Item C, we will make a contribution to the city trust fund to the extent that we have a deficiency in our trees, correct, Scott?
Correct.
Okay. Item D asks us to tell you if we plan to park tractor-trailers on the site outside of the rear bays, which I suppose is in that bulb area, if you could point it out to us.
Correct, yeah. So we were asked when we were at the TAC meeting to address any potential parking in that rear bulb area, the turnaround area. What we've done is we provided signage, no stopping, no standing, no parking, whatever, fire lane kind of thing, and it is, it's signed around the entire bulb, so that nobody is permitted to park in that area. The only parking for, for tractors or for trailers will be within those 14 bays themselves, needed.
The next item E is informational, tells you that both the WB53 and WB67 vehicles can safely and efficiently traverse through the site, and we're happy that the staff agrees with that. With regard to Item F, looking for testimony concerning the environmental conditions in history, and that I hopefully will have satisfied you with the Exhibit A1, which is a rather detailed proposal as to how they're going to delineate the extent of the contamination. Item G, we will agree to screen and protect with bolards the transformer, correct, Scott?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And the African should clarify if it will be vacating the easement on the adjacent property. That's Item H. Scott, can you point out where that easement is?
Sure. It is located in the north-westerly corner of Jersey Avenue, in our most north-western corner of the property. It is located on Block 242, Lot 16.203, which is shown on the upper portion of the rendering here, and it's, it's really parallel with Jersey Avenue. I don't know exactly, I remember how wide it is, but it is a, an access easement to the benefit of this property.
All right. The staff had requested that we vacate the easement, and the answer is we're agreeable to doing that upon the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for our new building. Once we know we have a ceiling, that the site's going to operate correctly, we're happy to vacate the easement. Moving now to the Delaware and Raritan Report, have you had an opportunity to review that?
Yes, I have.
All right.
And that's dated January 11, 2019.
Correct. Are there any issues in that report that the applicant cannot handle?
No, nothing anywhere that we can address.
All right. And to the extent that we will be complying with it, Mr. Chairman, if we get approval from you tonight, which we're hopeful for, we would make that voluntary condition of approval, or approvals. I would ask Mr. Carley if there's anything that he would like us to specifically address with regard to this report.
Mr. Chair, just going through my report, a second review, we had done a report in November, and Mr. Turner's obviously revised the plans in response to that in the PAC meeting. So this represents, most of the report represents cross-offs where they, they met the comments previously. I'd just like Mr. Turner just going through those comments that ask for testimony to discuss about how you anticipate solid waste collection and disposal will be managed at the site.
Yeah, that'll be through the trash compactor that is located in the truck dock area in the rear, and then we'll have recycling handled internally, and it will be picked up as needed during normal pickup days.
One of the things I sort of miss about this report right now, my comment 13.8 is pretty standard comment of mine, just instructing the applicant that they have to get other agency permits, et cetera, et cetera. I have no mission there, I don't think I have NJDOT highway access. Is that on a state highway yet?
It's on a state highway.
Or is it just short of it?
It's just short of it.
Okay.
The intersection of Vandike Avenue of Jersey, to the south, is where the DOT jurisdiction begins.
So you're shot at it. Okay, so you don't need it then.
Correct.
And everything else in that report that's outstanding is okay?
Correct, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Scott, we do have three variances, correct?
Yes.
All right. And one of them concerns the buffer strip, and then we have trees and foundation plantings, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, you are not a professional planner, correct?
I am not.
All right. However, you've been involved in hundreds of site plan applications over your career, correct?
I have, yes.
Okay. Do you have an opinion whether these variances can be granted without any substantial detriment to the public good?
Yeah, I do, and I first, you know, illustrate which variances we're seeking, and one is where landscape buffer strip along Jersey Avenue, a 10-foot minimum strip is required. And we have 10 feet for the most part, with the exception of when you get up towards the northerly service driveway, we have a 7.3-foot minimum proposed, and it gets better as you head towards the south. I will tell you, though, the landscaping that we're proposing along that buffer strip, even though the area is a little narrower, is no different than what we're proposing in the 10-foot area that we have. So, you know, in my opinion, that landscape item and the other ones as well are basically aesthetic matters, and it really had no detrimental impact in terms of the design, didn't have to reduce the amount of landscaping in that area. The second one was for foundation plantings, and again, you know, given the fact that this is a warehouse building, it doesn't necessarily lend itself for foundation plantings around all four sides, given the intended use, we did provide landscaping on the two open sides that we could do that. And the tree planting requirements, which is the last one, which we talked about, we are 54 trees short in terms of how many we can plant on-site, and that's just basically, you know, based on a space restriction, we really can't fit anymore on the property without jeopardizing the health of the trees. So we do agree the applicant agrees to contribute to the city tree fund. So, you know, my opinion is that, you know, there's really no substantial detriment, there's no compromise of safety in terms of the planting of those variances by this board.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes his direct testimony. He's available for your questions.
Just, if I may, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a quick, I might have missed it. Was there testimony on any soil contamination on the site from the junkyard use?
The answer is yes, Todd. We submitted the application, or report, it was a Phase 1, and then you have, as Exhibit A1, tonight, which is in front of you, asked to bring an environmental proposal for delineating the extent of the environmental contamination.
So the condition that I would suggest would be that ultimately that the site be under the review and control of a licensed site remediation professional, who would either certify that the site is clean enough to be developed or maintain in perpetuity a control of the site that would, that would be a regular review of the environmental conditions to ensure that they're either being remediated or have been remedied. The remediation might be ongoing forever, so it's, it's a continuous sort of process. So it's, it's the LSRP certification that would be a condition of approval.
And we would be happy to accept that as a voluntary condition.
In terms of, I don't know who would be the right person to answer this, but in terms of ensuring that this is only, this is a warehouse facility, right, there's storage of materials, there's no manufacturing proposed, just given that you don't have an end user, just some sort of representation on the end use, and what zoning do we have in place that prohibits?
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, the parking requirement for a manufacturing use in the city is much more demanding than the parking requirement for a warehouse, sort of storage use. So, since the applicant doesn't have a tenant right now, when they do have a tenant, they submit a zoning or tenancy application, it's going to say the precise user, the type of use that's on it. If it turns out that it's going to be a manufacturing use, when we go back to review the application, we'll say, hey, this was approved for a warehouse out of one per, one per employee, now you've got 10,000 square feet of manufacturing space, parking calculation might not work, you might have to come back.
Mr. Chairman, even beyond that, let's say it was used to have less of a parking demand. If we're going to do something other than a warehouse use, we recognize we have to come back to you. All right? I don't know if there's any other questions at all.
Even though this is a warehouse use, I'm sure it's consistent with the zoning, there's a residential area just to the, I guess it's just to the north, and on the other side of the road on Jersey Avenue, is there any flood and drought, truck traffic is going to impact that area, or?
I think Jersey Avenue is a pretty heavily trafficked area with trucks now. I think, being given the fact that it's a junkyard, I would suspect that this property already had some truck traffic already. I don't think, in my opinion, there's going to be any substantial impact to that area, given the fact that you're a lot along Jersey Avenue, which is partially a state highway and a Kent County roadway.
Is the expectation that the trucks are going to, that exit egress is going to be out, going out of New Brunswick rather than into the, into the city?
I think, the anticipation, in my opinion, I think, would be that they would go out of New Brunswick, heading towards the south. That's my expectation.
That would be the way trucks become an impound out, that would be the expectation.
Only because that would be the way to get in and out of the site, yeah.
It wouldn't make sense for them to traverse through city streets.
Right, I don't think so either, on this desk.
No, it's, it's a good point, and the other thing that I'd like to add is that when you have a facility like this, you don't have have a facility like this, you don't have peak time traffic. In other words, the trucks, okay, their trip generation is distributed fairly easily over the course of the entire day and not during a peak period.
Well, what's the, do you have any expectation of the volume or no? You just don't know.
No, but we only have 14 bays, so you're not looking at a tremendous amount of volume.
May I, Mr. Chairman? If you take a look at Institute of Transportation Engineers, IPA, and you see that a bit here, their expectation for traffic generation for a warehouse is 0.47 trips for every thousand square foot of warehouse. You have 67,000 square foot of warehouse here for the sake of that. So on the peak hour from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., you could expect 31 trips going in or out, and that would be makes a passenger vehicle and trucks. So that would be the peak hour trips. To put that in context of what you see on Jersey Avenue now, in the Miskivitz report we talked about, showed that there's about 15,500 average daily trips on Jersey Avenue pathways, and the peak hour is 1,865. So in context of what you see on Jersey Avenue now, that's something to record the way a lot of those 31 trips in the context of the 1,865 trips is.
Thank you very much.
All right. Finally, Mr. Chairman, I just want to supplement what Scott testified to with regard to the variances. We think that from a legal perspective, the amount of updates that we're requesting is nominal. We don't believe that bringing these variances will have any detriment to the public good. Nor is there the zone plan, and basically when you look at the overall benefits of this project, the renovation of a junkyard, a very modern and very attractive new use, the landscape improvements, the aesthetic improvements, we think that you can conclude that the benefits substantially outweigh any detriment. That concludes our direct case.
Any public comment? Do you swear, do I have to swear in court? Yeah. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and hope about the truth?
Yes. Good evening, members of the board, happy to be here, everybody. Couple of questions, there's an interesting presentation, I learned a lot. So first of all, I'd like to hear a little more about the contamination and remediation and what's in that report. For instance, what contaminants are present, if that's known?
I'm not an LSRP. You certainly can have the opportunity to take a look at Exhibit A-1.
Okay.
To some degree, at least from a planning board's perspective, that's not our jurisdiction, but we do, as a condition of this approval, we're ensuring, I think, that the applicant has represented that they comply with all the DEP standards and requirements for that site remediation.
Mr. Chairman, also a product from the RGDEP, we're committed to construction activities to occur or development activities to occur if there's remediation or if there's a real plan that's contrary to that plan.
So it's not clear from this what the contaminants are. Does anybody know from the applicant? Just curious what type of contaminants they're going to throw. Soil contamination, but what?
Not a contaminant.
It's soil only, there's no evidence of groundwork contamination. That's the extent of my knowledge.
Okay. And I learned today that, I guess, NJG 91 Jersey Avenue starts at Van Dyke Avenue as south as the state jurisdiction, and what jurisdiction is it north of that? Is it county or city?
Middlesex County.
County, okay. I am a little concerned about this intersection here, Van Dyke Avenue. I'm not sure what the, I'm not sure where the movements have been planned out for the trucks, but this is already an unsignalized intersection, correct, Van Dyke and Jersey?
Right.
Right, so it's unsignalized, it's an area where there's just not that many roads, so the roads fill up a lot because there's demand for it, and there's also a school, McKinley School nearby, and so this intersection at certain times of day gets, can be very challenging to navigate without a signal, and if you're having trucks also come here, and then it was alluded to that most of the trucks might be going south, so then they would have to be, I guess if they're coming from this way, they'd have to make a left at that already tricky intersection. I don't want anybody to hurt or worse, because of, you know, big trucks are making left turns at a tricky intersection. Would the developer potentially be willing to pay to signalize the intersection if the county and/or the DOT wanted that to happen?
The answer is there is no evidence that this signal, this intersection needs to be signalized. We certainly have to get county approval, all right, and if the county wants it, then we will have to do it, but I don't think the warrants are there. The other thing I would point out is there are no school-aged children that will be traversing up and down Jersey Avenue to get to the McKinley School. They come from the residential area that is not anywhere near this intersection.
I'm sure there's some folks who go to McKinley School and they might take fusses in, but it should also be noted that there is, at this very intersection, a warehouse owned by the prior applicant that's been used on and off as a school for many years, and it's my understanding that the school district has plans to continue using that location right there at this corner as a school. So it's conceivable that there may be some kids and parents and folks using that intersection, and I'm just concerned about the traffic safety, so I would hope that, you know, the applicant and the city and the county and the state would work together to make sure that intersection's safe before we add even more truck traffic to this dangerous intersection. That's all, thank you.
Are there any conditions?
Certainly. If the order acts favorably, the following would be recommended as conditions of approval: compliance with the terms of the DNR engineering report dated January 11th, 2019, submission of all necessary easements and cross-access agreements for review of approval by this board attorney and the city engineer prior to filing the same, payment of a site performance bond in an amount reviewed and improved by the city engineer, submission of site inspection escrow, possession and engineering inspection fees in an amount calculated pursuant to city ordinance, payment of all water and sewer connection fees, issuance of a road opening permit from the city engineer if required, compliance with the terms of the Big Bell Planning Report dated January 8th, 2018, contribution to the city's tree preservation trust fund in the amounts determined by the technical advisory committee, planning review escrow funded for all anticipated postapproval reviews, payment of all outstanding taxes and water or sewer fees, approval of the Middlesex County Planning Board, approval or waiver of the DNR Canal Commission, Freehold Soil Conservation District approval, submission of a certification from a licensed site remediation professional relative to the site contamination.
At one point in time...
That would be a condition of resolution compliance.
Well, as it was previously noted, this contamination may take decades to do. Just want to make sure it doesn't get in the way of getting a building from there, getting a CL.
Right, so the process is not to provide the NFA anymore, it's not like you have any further action now, the LSRP essentially says, yes, the remediation program complies with the DEP requirements, and you can go ahead and build it, and the LSRP, that's a person essentially says, I will maintain review and control and certification of the site and monitor the conditions, and calls for remediation wells, then they put the wells on, and they do the monitoring, and they check the water, and that's...
The problem with that approach is that we're not at the point in time where we know the extent of the contamination. A-1 is the initial part of the process to delineate the extent of it. I would rather have the representation that we will work continuously and diligently to move forward with the remediation process.
Yeah, that's fine, we ultimately are going to need to get some sort of certification from the LSRP that says it can be, the plan that's been prepared by the LSRP will certify that the site can be remediated, and you're going to carry out one shape or form or other, and you're going to carry out the implementation of that plan, and if part B of that plan is continuous monitoring, that's something you have to agree to.
And it could be by capiput, so...
It could be by capiput, all right.
So just to clarify, how are we going to memorialize? What's the client proposing that's different from what was stated? What are you proposing in terms of the condition of the resolution compared to what was read? Todd, do you want to just re-attack? Can I?
Sure, it's submission of an LSRP certification relative to site contamination, so we should clarify that. It would be a certification that the remediation plan meets the DEP requirements.
And I would just add, prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy...
And that includes the diligent pursuit of the remediation warehouse proof?
Yes.
The condition would be to vacate easements, it's on the northern portion of the property, upon issuance of the certificate of occupancy. All utilities and other site improvements to be maintained by the applicant at their sole expense. All onsite utilities to be constructed underground. All temporary encroachments into the public right of way shall require city council approval. All construction staging shall be done onsite unless the encroachment allowing it to the public right of ways approved by the city council. Streets shall be kept clean of sediment and debris. The applicant shall cause the streets to be cleaned if directed to do so by the Director of Public Works. Tracking pads shall be installed at all construction exits. Replacement of any damage to streets, curbs, and sidewalks as per the direction of the city engineer. And variances or relief will be granted for site plan approval, tree replacement, parking lot screening, and foundation plantings, were the three relief items, in addition to the site plan approval.
Do you have an nomination?
Would you approve the application with the conditions as stated?
Second. Suzanne Ludwig?
Yes.
Minogue Staneda?
Yes.
Bob Critica?
Yes.
John Pritchilino?
Yes.
Dale Wickers?
Yes.
Illich Tacheco?
Yes.
Jeff Crum?
Yes.
Thank you, door line.
Thank you.